Okay, it's about 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. Agenda, I have one item, Regional Planning Commission. Change from, or change our alternate member to our official member that will go into new business. Does anybody have anything else? I get a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from November 15th. Any adds or changes from anybody? Everybody good?
Yep.
Now managers report.
Okay, just a couple of things I'm gonna add before I get to the stuff that's in front of you. I've been attending the Otter Creek Communication Union District meetings and at the last meeting, I think I reported to the board that we were originally skipped for the build-out for next year with the way funding was done. Not sure what happened, but we had a meeting last night, like an executive meeting, and that actually we are going to be in the build-out for next year. The companies have changed. It was Consolidated Communication. Otelco is a smaller company over kinda on the other side of the hill here, has joined with a company called Gonet Services. They're a regional New England company and they're doing a big build-out. And they made a proposal that was better for the region here. And then we found out too that the way that the grant works, that the Communication District got that if they overbuild, it's in violation of the grant rules. And that was the concern with Consolidated, that they were gonna overbuild. So this, we made, we voted last night to go with Otelco to do the build-out as it was originally supposed to be done when the district started. So that means we're gonna get our build-out here in Pittsburgh for the areas that are underserved. So, I'll let you know when we get the contract signed on that. But yeah, it was good news last night, 'cause we were a little, you know, a little depressed when we found out we were getting skipped the first time.
Yeah, I didn't particularly care for that.
So the other cool thing with this is it's not costing us anything. You know, the town doesn't have to pay. And I thought that the residents would have to pay from the pole to the house. Nope. And it's all fiber. So yep, free connection. So that's really, that's really cool. Yeah. So that, and then just another quick thing.
One question Dave on that.
Yeah.
So can we get a map
Yeah.
of the areas that are gonna be served by that, that could be put up here so people can see?
Sure.
I think we'd all like to know where it's gonna be.
I think the big ones were over on, I gotta make sure which road I'm on, Old Hubbardton and Fire Hill area. And then Sugar Hollow, I think, was the other one that was, that was...
What about West Creek?
I'd have to look on that one. I thought there was Provider there already.
No.
Not for fiber? Okay. I'll look into that one.
Okay. No, I don't have it. No, we don't have it. Huh? Yeah, yeah, that's what they told me.
Have you looked on like the Fidium website? If you type your address in, it'll tell you if you can get it.
Fidium?
Fidium Fiber, that's Consolidated's company.
Oh.
They did a big build-out a couple of years ago in this area.
No, we don't, we don't have it. I know we don't have it.
I would just check.
It ends at Markowski's Garage, or right about Markowski's Garage. That's the end of the fiber.
I'll ask on that one.
Okay.
Another thing that has happened, so Helen has been in touch with Bond Counsel for the water line for the bridge. So Robert Fletcher, Paul Gilani actually deceased, we didn't know that. So you know, he was great. We worked with him for years. So Helen and I, she started a list of what we're gonna need. There'll be a resolution for the board hopefully at the next meeting to sign to, you know, go through the bond process for the water line. So that'll be the start of it. We've got plenty of time to get it on for the March town meeting. So more to come with that. And then just another thing, Jeff threw some stuff on the table here for some zoning stuff, just for your information. And now to my report. Attended the Chittin Reservoir Emergency Action Plan Meeting on the 16th of November. The goal of this group has been to create a plan that'll alert the public in as quick a possible way if the dam poses any threat. So that's pretty much what we talk about all the time. The transfer station changeover happened on December 1st. We posted the new rates on the town website and in last week's reporter. Rate seats also available here and a lot of people have come and picked it up. So actually Tracy was in here earlier tonight and said that things went much smoother today. So there was a little, you know, just some confusion with the first thing. But it's going, it's really starting to smooth out, so. I included a letter in the packet from Vermont DEC approving the 90% completed preliminary engineering report capital improvement plan for the Water Department. DEC has also recommended the remaining 10% be completed once V-Trans has finalized the construction schedule and plans for segments two and three. Also in the packet is a Tri-Town Trails Scoping Project Work Plan. I need some shorter names for review. Attended a meeting with Procter and West Rattlin Town Managers and the RPC and V-Trans to discuss the proposed work plan from StanTech, who are the chosen engineers for the scoping study. We did ask they consider some value engineering to stay within the approved budget. So I know that Stephanie Burke is the project manager from RPC, so she's meeting with them. So we really wanna make sure we're staying within budget on that. So you know, more to come, but the scoping, you know, what they're proposing is in your packet. Had a meeting with the West Rattlin Town Manager to start discussions on contracting police services from us. The current proposal is a five-year contract that covers a 40-hour week. I did ask if they fund a cruiser. They're considering it be split to, you know, yearly payments within the five-year contract for the cruiser. I think it's a pretty good start for negotiating on this. So you know, she's, she's gonna talk to her board too and see what comes out of that. So this was our first meeting. Procter didn't attend, so.
Where's Procter falling at?
Well, there were discussions and Judy couldn't make it to our meeting last week for some reason. She was, so, yeah. I think that they wanna do something. I guess they tried a few years ago with you guys too, right?
Yeah.
Sorta.
Sorta, yeah.
Right.
Sore subject.
Attended the Regional Transportation Meeting on the 30th. The presentation was on lane widths, roadway geometry and speed, which was interesting on, you know, some of the things we've been dealing with in town. So just road widths and you know how narrowing things creates, you know, cars slow down usually for that. Staff's been working on the budget and delinquent taxes. I'm just setting there too that Helen's got the estimate cost for the water line to get bond started. Highways finished the road rebuild on Oxbow. It seems to be holding up well. So we'll let you know after spring thaw. Highways also been working with contractor at the rec pond with, for the dock support system retaining wall. And Chad actually was burning midnight oil last night and scraped all the milfoil out of the bottom of the pond. I believe they had 12 tandem loads of stuff that came out of it. So that's done. And no one can remember if it was ever done before, so. Yeah, so that's pretty good. So that's all cleaned up and we're out of that. Thanks to Markowskis for the use of one of their large pumps to help drain the pond. Rec, just a few things. Basketball season's begun. Liz has got a Sugar Hollow Ice Bowl Disc Golf Tournament coming up in January benefiting the Pittsburgh Food Shelf. We met with Lyle at Cedar and Liz is gonna be a director on the board, one of the directors on the board for Cedar now, so that's, that's a good thing for us. And she's been doing the bone builder classes and that's been a huge success. More people are coming every week for that.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
This DEC letter, I see it's made out to the city of South Burlington?
Yeah, which one?
The DEC letter. And it lists John Haverstock on it. Are they a little behind up there?
Well, that will be old business.
What's that?
That letter's in old business.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you brought it up on this.
No, this is a different letter. This is the one from the DEC.
Oh, from?
For the, for the, yeah.
Oh, the, oh, okay. Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the appraisal letter. Sorry.
Nope.
Okay.
We don't know it's us because we've talked to them too, so.
Yeah, no, I noticed that too.
A spell check and maybe, yeah.
Yeah, you would think.
You would think, yeah. Lot of new people there, Mark.
Is that it from everybody? AI would probably get it right. Select Board Member remarks. Anybody? Okay, public comment? Yes?
Yes. Stand to address the board?
Your, it's your pleasure.
Your pleasure, if you want.
Hello and good evening to you all. My name is Scott Kaufman and I, along with my wife and two children, reside here in Pittsburgh on Arch Street. I would first like to thank our town manager David, as well as members of the Pittsburgh Select Board for providing me the time and opportunity to speak here tonight. My purpose this evening is to initiate a dialogue and offer suggestion that the entirety of Arch Street be designated as to exclude all through traffic entering off of Route 7. The main purpose of my request and the importance of this specific municipal designation is to set into motion the removal of this often abused Arch Street bypass from navigational assistance tools such as Waze, Google Maps, MapQuest, et cetera. These popular navigation resources often default to routing both north and southbound through traffic onto our street rather than continuing to travel via Route 7. This shortcut is no secret to inform locals, but it seems highly unnecessary for the option to be advertised to those vehicles simply passing through Pittsburgh Village. I thank each of you for your time tonight and offer myself as available to help in any way that is appropriate towards implementing this change.
Thank you. Was your, your, okay.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Steve Rochausky. I live on Whipple Hollow. Sort of late, horse is already out of the barn now, but it has to do with the transfer station. And I was rather blindsided when I came to get my new ticket and my punch card to find out that there was a major change going on. First, I think that it should have been appropriate that something that is affecting basically everybody in town, maybe public information should have been requested, maybe public comment. I don't know if there was an RFP that was sent out, how many responses you received for that. But even on the website today, it is still showing the old information. It has not updated anything. So the other part is that it appears that the rates have basically doubled, if not more. Because typically before we had the punch card, it was two, two and a half dollars per bag. And it'd be, let's just say 30-pound bag, it's, you know, 10 cents a pound. Now it's going to 20 cents a pound, so you've doubled. And now you're charging for recycling. I think if anything, we want to encourage people to recycle, not penalize people who are trying to do the right thing. I'm sure that costs have gone up over the years, maybe. I mean, last year I think we had a raise, but probably hadn't gone up much before that. So I understand things have to go up. But now, and I haven't gone yet because I only go every 10 days, two weeks or whatever. If we go on a Saturday when there's a line, now what are you gonna do? Wait on line to get your bag weighed? I mean, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. Could've just increased the price accordingly, kept the old punch card, make it easy, keep the guys that were there, there. The other part of it is that on the printout, this little page that I got when I came to town last week or the week before to get my punch card, it's saying zero sort recycling, $1 minimum up to 30 gallon tote. What does that mean? Is it a dollar minimum per pa, I mean, I don't know. Is it up to 30 pounds, it's a dollar? Because it's saying a dollar minimum for a 30-gallon bag. It's very, it's not really written very clearly. So I just think that in the future, if you're doing something that is going to affect everybody in the town, because I'm pretty sure everybody does this, maybe a notice of what you were planning on doing should be made public so people can voice their support or voice that they're against it without having to find out when you go to get your new punch card that there's a whole change. Now I happen to have an extra punch card, 'cause I bought one and didn't use it. So I understand it's still gonna be used going forward until I run out. That's fine. But it just sort of blindsided me and apparently anybody I talked to said the same thing. We didn't hear anything about it. What are you talking about? Until they started coming in, finding out that the punch card. So my first question, you gave me the short answer, and I'm sorry, I didn't know about this before because when you had it on the agenda, maybe last time or the time before, I could've asked these questions, but was there an RFP sent out on this matter?
Yes.
And how many responses did you get?
Answer his questions. So I believe that we've had at least four select board meetings where this was on the agenda. I do know that the Rowland Herald had run an article on it after one or two of them. We did send an RFP out to all of the certified haulers that are in the area. I think we sent five out. I did get a verbal on a phone with another company that wasn't interested. So you'd have to be certified to do the work. As far as fees, we were losing money, actually I think, and I've gone back to as far as 2007, of an amount of between 40 and 60,000 dollars a year at the transfer station. So that was being subsidized by the taxpayers and folks that weren't using the transfer station were paying for folks to use it. So that was what really prompted it to get an RFP out. We get charged, we were being charged by the pound to have it hauled away. So you know, charging by the bag, you know, take a bag of feathers or a bag of bricks, you know, we're losing money if it's the bricks right offhand. So that would've had to change. And I think we were talking that if we had set fees for us to continue, it would've been five or six dollars a bag. Recycling is actually costing more now than trash to get rid of, so we would've had to start a recycling fee as well. And you know, it was, how much did we wanna raise the budget to cover this cost? So this was what was discussed and the board approved. Yeah, I don't know. I don't think I have anything else. I think I've answered all your questions. But I mean, I, I think we...
Well, the recycling, the recycling like what, doubled or tripled on us?
It's, it's gone up, well, it's $15 more a ton to get rid of than trash now. So I can't remember what the price was, but it's pretty expensive.
Yeah. So unfortunately, and that's, you know, I don't know what, well, wherever it is, whoever it is, I'm not gonna say who it is, 'cause I guess I don't know. But recycling costs more to get rid of than garbage does. I mean, it makes no sense.
No, it doesn't.
We were, we were told, you know, recycling was gonna save the world. And now all of a sudden, guess what, it's, it's making a mess. So a lot of that was what prompted us to do this. I mean, we, our initial, this was back, what, September or October? Our initial, we were gonna have two different punch cards and we were gonna have a punch card for recycling and one for garbage because there's a lot of disparity in what it costs us to get rid of them overall. Because it's, it's not just the per-pound fee, it's we have to rent the dumpsters. There's all these other things that go into it with our former entity that was taken care of it. So...
Well, as I said, I know costs have gone up, so it's no surprise that things go up. We understand that. But I think that the way it's being done now is a little bit more complicated maybe than it needs to with this weighing and, you know, I'll, we'll see what happens when I go on a Saturday and see, you know, people waiting in line to get the weight.
I've heard a couple of things that people are happy that it's this way because they've been bringing in a 10-pound, 30-gallon bag for years and yet they see the next guy's got this one stuff that probably weighs 40 or 40 pounds and it's really not fair to be paying the same amount for each when it's going out by weight. So we're hoping that this weight thing will be fairer for everybody in the end.
I did notice, I think I looked at something and it said you were looking at having some kind of email go out? Like hiring somebody who's gonna send out, you could sign up to get emails or something?
So yeah, actually we're meeting, it's a, this company called SendText. So they're email, or text blast that we can do. And actually, we're meeting with the person tomorrow to make it go live. So it'd be, you know, for emergency stuff and all kinds of other things. So you know, we could do it for taxes, whatever we wanted to. So yeah, we're hoping to get it set up tomorrow and we'll start posting it on how to sign up, so.
Okay, so am I correct in understanding that the recycling is just a dollar for 30-gallon bag?
Yes. Cardboard's free, shredded paper's free. I guess that's it for recycling, yes.
Are you still doing the styrofoam?
I don't know what they're doing with styrofoam. I think that's a separate thing down there with styrofoam.
If you go right in front of, I'm the assistant to the town manager, so in front of my door, there's a thing that was all the recycling that is being taken.
Okay.
All right. There's a question about the web.
Yeah, we did put, actually the day you called, we, we put it, actually it was on there before and we updated it with...
It's under all of the new things on the front website. It's now on the transfer station page.
I looked on the transfer station and it's still not accurate.
So scroll down on the homepage and it's there.
So the transfer station's not accurate, but the new is?
Well, the transfer station, I had to wait until the change happened. And then I've been out for personal issues the last two days, so.
You had to wait until it happened before?
Right.
Because we were still active Wednesday, so.
Yes, yeah.
We'll make sure that those are done.
Hopefully within the next week that will get changed. Apologize for that, but it's...
No, that's okay. Just somebody to know.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Joe?
Yeah, just, you can also go to Gleason Road and they're still by the bag, whatever it is that they charge and whatnot. If it doesn't work out for you there, you find it too much of a pain in the butt or whatever, Gleason Road is still open, I think, five days a week.
I'd rather stay here.
And on the first gentleman's comments, is, do we wanna just, I don't know what's involved in getting stuff off Google Maps and that.
Scott and I talked actually a couple of days ago, I guess.
Just a couple emails.
No, just, yeah, and you know, we're, well, we're gonna be, well, we'll see. The speed limit might be getting lowered at tonight's meeting. And then enforcement now, but it'd be up to the board to decide if they wanted to do a no-through traffic.
Through traffic has been a problem for years.
Yeah, forever.
Forever.
Yeah.
We tried a one-way deal.
Hang on, Joe, Tom's talking.
No, I was gonna say, we tried several years ago to do a one-way thing from the fire station north and south. That didn't pan out. The neighbors all complained and so that didn't work.
Yeah.
We've considered putting speed bumps by the fire station, which I personally think would work myself. Nobody wants to go over a speed bump and it wouldn't affect the fire department one bit because you're pulling out slow anyways. So that's something we can discuss at some other point, so.
Back at about the time I came onto the board, that's couldn't have been a year ago. That was tried, like Tom said. And if I remember right, didn't the state step in and say we had to do away with that? We couldn't?
No, we had so much, so many complaints from the neighbors that forced us to change that.
And then there was another issue.
No, because it's a town, town road and they...
I know one farmer who was moving wide farm machinery. He couldn't go down Route 7 because of the curbs and it was too dangerous. He asked, he came to the board and asked for permission to be able to go down Arch Street with a wide hay bind or whatever it was, because he could navigate down through there. And I had it in the back of my mind that maybe the state stepped in, but perhaps...
No, 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 not to my knowledge. They didn't.
Well, we're, I think that there's, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for the board yet, but there has been some discussion on lowering all the village speed limits to 25. So that will get brought up. And we have been, PD has been doing more enforcement in the village because Elm and Arch have both been pretty problematic. So you know, we'll just keep continuing to do that right now, but...
Well, if I may.
Yes, yeah.
It's really, I, I understand the needs of local traffic and it, the focus really is the navigation apps. Because I, I, I don't, you can round up as many angry neighbors as you want, but the tech companies don't care. But if it comes through municipal designation, then just like a posted speed limit when you make that change, they will update. Because local people are gonna, are gonna do what they're gonna do anyway. And...
There's no real downside.
No, no.
And I, I, I mean, the tractors don't buy. My kids stare out the window and look at them. And you know, those guys are the ones who are looking out for people walking on the street. So it's really people who aren't familiar with the area. And you mentioned Elm Street. I know a similar thing happens there. We have friends who live on Elm Street and after seeing a car stopped on the side of the road for a few minutes, out of state plates, just went out and said, hey, everything okay? And they were confused because they were accustomed to driving north to south, Route 7, and getting, heading south onto Route 3, connecting over to West Rattlin, and their navigation app sent them down Elm Street.
Yeah, it does.
It does, because I've had mine try to send me down through there, so yeah.
And I'm being optimistic with positioning and length of Arch Street and kind of a perfect qualifier for this sort of thing. And, and I just, I couldn't resist coming and presenting that to you, so.
I think the no-through signs is a good approach. And I certainly talked to Ethan at RPC and see if he has any ideas too.
I don't see a downside to it.
I don't see a downside to it either.
No, no. Elm and Arch, both.
Thanks for your suggestion.
Yeah.
And the enforcement is great there. I mean, I know when they sit at the MS building, I mean, it's like fish in a barrel.
Sit there all day long, one after another.
Unfortunately, in all those GPSs, I mean, we have the issue with trucks trying to go down Elm Street and you know, then they see our covered bridge and...
Yeah.
And I know that's gone to legislator a few times to try to, you know, have trucks use the right GPS apps for, you know, trucks and it just, that never passes.
Trailer trucks on Whipple Hollow.
Well, I was gonna say it's Whipple Hollow too. And that's, again, that's GP, nobody in their right mind would go that way unless something's telling them to and it's the GPS.
Shortest distance.
Yeah, so, okay.
Pay our taxes by putting a cop there and giving a trailer, a thousand-dollar fine instead of 150, whatever it is.
Well, they get some pretty good fines. There's some hefty fines.
To do that, just that.
Several thousand dollars.
Yes, so, okay, thank you. Old business, municipal reappraisal on Act 68, letter discussion approval.
So this is the letter that Lisa came and talked to the board about.
Yeah.
Last meeting or meeting. And this is basically what was sent to the state, almost verbatim, from a couple of other towns, so.
So it came from somebody else?
Yes.
We didn't do that.
Yeah.
Any discuss, I have something. Does anybody else before I?
Pretty wordy, but you know.
Well, I guess my, my biggest issue with this whole thing is, right now, if you've got an issue with your appraisal, you go to, used to be Listers, now we go to our assessor. Talk to her. If we don't get anywhere, we have the option of going to the Board of Civil Authority. And if we don't get anything there, we have the option of going to the state. If the state's the one doing it, do we have any appeal process at all? And I think that needs to be brought up in that letter, myself, because I think that's huge. If you, no longer, if, if the state's gonna say your property's worth this and there's nobody appeal it to, that's not right at all. Now maybe there's something in the law that tells what the appeal is, but I'm guessing there isn't.
What court does that go to? I can't remember. I can only remember one. Is it Superior?
Or is it E-Court?
So, I mean...
So you're talking a huge expense for somebody?
I think it is Superior.
It's Supreme or Superior.
Yeah, I think it's Superior, which is technically not the same hand as the Vermont Department of Taxes.
Right, so.
This is a huge part, right? Awful.
Yeah. So I mean, it, you know, obviously up to the board, but that's just my opinion on it. I think that's a huge flaw in the system is the fact that people are gonna lose, you know, because it, essentially, you can go through the whole process and it, it costs you time, but it, you don't have to get a lawyer, you don't have to do anything else. But if, you know, you're gonna have to start going to Superior Court, my guess is you're gonna have to pay for a lawyer and other things. So I think that's something that also needs to be in that letter as far as a flaw in this whole thought process. That's just my opinion.
Up to you guys.
Yeah, I agree.
Just say, no, you don't want this. It's clear, but this is...
I mean, I get it, there's stuff in there praising them for things that they're doing right and you have to, you know, you've gotta play the game.
Would that be?
Well...
Might be.
I'd have to have the letter, but...
So I, I don't know.
I'm not saying, but I'm just saying the way it's, yes, it is wordy, but the way it's worded, it's not offensive in any way.
My guess is the board's probably gonna have an opportunity to write another letter through this process too, so.
Your thought is to use this letter to start with and then follow up with more...
I do. I do. I know the league's really behind the towns on this too, so.
Okay.
Stay with the mole on this one and next one?
Yeah.
It's kind of an invasion of our local control and our local ability to deal with our local problems. The state's, state just raising a big whipple for us.
Need a motion on that.
If, if, that's up to you guys, I, you know. Or if we, you know, if everybody thinks another letter's gonna be written and we can put it in that. But again, I think it's, it's a huge flaw in the system that our appeal process is certainly being limited drastically.
I'm gonna have you guys sign this if it's approved anyway, so.
If the letter was drafted and those of us who were in favor of it... If the letter was drafted and those of us who were in favor of it, signed it, would that do any good to send something like that?
Well, we're gonna, this letter is gonna be sent. If you guys approve it.
All we're talking about is whether we're gonna add something about the appeal process to it or not. That's our, yeah.
Draft up a decent letter that.
Well, we've already got a letter. It's just, right now, we're talking about adding.
Covering.
Another, you know.
I wanna make a motion to send this first letter as written, as been submitted to the towns. You said DLCTs.
I was just looking at on their site today too, so.
I'll second it. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me. I think that should be added, but that's okay. That's, alright. Uh, new business, Lyle, we'll get you out of here now. Floor's yours.
Thank you. Sorry, we're a little late. We chose not to go down Arch Street. I think dropping the speed limit is gonna do a whole lot and I don't think you've got another plan too, so that's good. Um, here with Olivia Lyons, who is our, I have to write it down all the time because it's long, Communications and Marketing Manager. And, um, Dave, thank you for bringing Liz down. Uh, you came down with Liz about three, four weeks ago. And Liz is actually gonna start on our marketing committee, which meets tomorrow. And we're gonna be talking about things that are going on that, uh, we'd like to talk to you a little bit about. You have been with us since the very beginning, helping support the regional marketing initiative. And if you rewind the tape, I'd probably say the same thing every time, so you can just go to the Peg TV show and rewind it from about eight years ago. But we're now in eight years of trying to bring more people to Rutland County. And it continues to be an issue for our local employers that there are not enough people that have the skill sets that they need, um, to hire. And so we are specifically reaching out to people with specific skill sets and people that quite frankly are of a particular age. Not necessarily mine, so that they will move here, come here, have families here and have their careers here. Um, it's economic development at the end of the day. And everything pretty much that we're doing with the Chamber of Economic Development, we have all these different committees, but they're all pulling in the same direction, which is to bring more people here. Which you then will say, well, where are you gonna put them? Cause there are no houses. So we're working on that too. There is a, a committee that's working on housing. You may hear the mayor of Rutland say that in, within five years, he wants to have a thousand more units in and around Rutland City. Um, we could fill those thousand units within the next five years. So we're doing our part in trying to bring people here. We've got another committee working on housing, and you've got another committee working on childcare. It all has to happen at the same time. And why are we doing all of that? Because when you see taxes going up because nothing goes down, we need to re-slice the pie. We need more pieces of pie so people are buying into that, so that you, you don't wanna have, uh, you wanna have more people paying into the budget. And so we need more people here to do that. So what we would like to show you is what we think is the success rate right at the moment of the regional marketing initiative. And Olivia is keeping all this, these statistics.
Thank you.
That point to the fact that we think it's going well. And you have been a supporter of three thousand dollars a year, which is close to maybe a little less than how many people live in the community. People wanna share, we brought more because we knew when you come here, there's an audience, which is kinda cool. We go to some select boards and there's nobody there. So getting public input, I think, is pretty important, part of the democratic process. Um, and I didn't give you one, sorry, okay. Um, if you open that up, Olivia's gonna talk to you a little bit about the numbers, which are on the left-hand side there. And we're not gonna go through all this word by word because we know you've got other things on your agenda. Um, and I should have started by saying, you also know why we're here, because we only come when I've got my, my hand out. Looking for a donation to the marketing initiative, so, the numbers.
Yes, so on the left-hand side, we have Real Rutland Concierge Program Fact Sheet. So our leads to the concierge program, those are just people who have said, I'm interested in Rutland County, tell me more. And as you can see, we dipped a little bit in twenty twenty-two, but we've been increasing our marketing efforts. And we started doing weekend getaways, which have really driven a lot of people to our website and learn more about us. And we've ended up of over doubling over our numbers. It's now close to fifteen hundred people who are interested so far in twenty twenty-three. And we're still getting people every week, so that will keep going up. The real solid stats, people who have moved to the area in twenty twenty-one, that number was really high. A lot of people were moving here because of COVID. Twenty twenty-two, it dipped, it was expensive, there weren't as many homes on the market. But twenty twenty-three, so far, we have had fifty-seven people move here. Um, four more are in the process of moving before the end of the year, and we have six who are in the process of moving in twenty twenty-four. So we know that it works. And there are people who are finding jobs here and finding houses and coming and contributing to the economy. And some of those people are moving to Pittsburgh as well.
These are the people that come through the program. People don't need our permission to move here, so there are other people that are coming that we are unaware of. Um, that may hear of our marketing efforts and be drawn to the area because they're seeing the things that we're putting on the Real Rutland website. Um, Olivia has really fine-tuned how she gets the word out around the nation. She has a list of cities, um, in different, uh, states around the US where she knows if she targets those cities, she's gonna get positive results. And it's places like Phoenix, Arizona. It's places like in Louisiana and Texas, where people say it's too hot. Um, I, or there's too many fires like in Colorado and other, um, western states. Um, and also people don't feel safe in some of their states. And I know that we've had some recent things going on here within the state of Vermont. But it nowhere matches what's happening in some of the other states. And people look to Vermont still as that safe place to be and raise a family. And you'll see some of the businesses that, um, have benefited from the program, and these are, many of these businesses contribute to the program. Because they recognize that we're helping them hopefully find nurses and, um, folks that work, can work for them. You'll also see in here, on the right-hand side, how we spend our money. And behind that, you'll see some of the, what we think are highlights around the county and many of our towns. That there are a lot of cool things going on and reasons for people to move here. And I keep going back and forth here, on the left-hand side, you're gonna see something that says, the life you were meant for. We customize things for businesses and towns. This was customized for a particular business that was looking at the Diamond Run Mall. And they wanted to know, well, what are the fun things that are going on here? So in addition to this, we also provided them with traffic counts, we provided them with some other economic information about bleed. Because there, as you would suspect, um, people sometimes leave our communities to go shopping someplace else. And to get people to come here, we do have statistics on what that bleed looks like and what people are buying in different communities like Lynn Falls or Burlington. So we can customize things for businesses and others. And then our annual reports there. Anything you wanna know, you know, use that for late night, put yourself to sleep, what are those committees doing down there? We are excited that Liz is gonna be on one of our committees. And we have very much appreciated your support now for, this would be eight years, if you were to, uh, support us again. We would open it up to questions, because you know I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the same thing over and over again. And I'll be back here in year nine, as part of a ten-year program.
Anyone have any questions?
You said you were targeting people with specific sets of skills, and what would they be?
We're looking for nurses.
Yes.
Looking for educators, can't find, you can't find enough teachers, we're looking for engineers, we're looking for people with math and science degrees. And you can target using, using Facebook is, or not Facebook, did we use Facebook? That's what we're using. It's pretty amazing how you can drill down and spend money in particular ways to find a particular audience.
Who has their CDL?
Technology like Arch Street, using technology, you can limit the traffic that's gonna go through Arch Street.
Joe. Um, I don't know if you guys had anything to do with the, uh, program that they had back in twenty nineteen. They were paying people to move here, to work here. Uh, we ended up moving here and, uh, my old lady transferred jobs. And we were involved in that process. That was a headache. We never got anything out of it, other than aggravation. And then COVID happened and the program went poof. So I kinda took it as, you know, a bait and switch. Cause it was like. Huh?
State to state.
Sort of.
Yes.
You know, I mean, I mean, we were planning on moving here anyways. But we found the program, it sounded like it was a great idea, it worked out, cause her company at the time was out in New York and they have locations here. And then, like I said, I mean, we ended up with more questions than we had answers. Every time we tried to get ahold of somebody to find out, we were just left scratching our heads. And then, like I said, COVID happened and the program went poof, and we never got reimbursed anything for moving here. Not that I expect to get reimbursed for making my own decision and buying a house here, but, I mean, I, I just thought it was a joke.
I think you would find a lot of people that agree with you on that. And that's, I think your local legislators here, I won't name names, probably agree with you. Um, how we remediate that is that we have a person that is, that this program helps pay for, who is our concierge coordinator. And she is a person that you can call up and you can talk to her, or you can be on a Zoom call, or she'll email you. Um, her half, it's a halftime position, but she is constantly talking to people that have questions. And it's down to the point where some people will say, well, we don't understand why you need winter tires. Or what is fuel oil, what's fuel oil anyway? We use propane, what's fuel oil? Or we use natural gas. So we, we're answering those questions and we have a person that actually does that. And I'm sorry you experienced what you did, because my hope is, had you been contacting us, um, which you didn't know about, um, we would have done a better job.
I will also say, ours is a free program and we haven't paid anyone.
Well, it, it was free as far as I know. I mean, you know, the state had it and we just happened to come across it. Um, and the other thing, my other, uh, point or what have you is, um, I'm a business owner. And I've looked at opening up something in Rutland and with the crime there, I'm not gonna open something there. I really don't think so, cause I'm not gonna put up with it and I don't dial nine-one-one. You steal from me, you made a bad mistake and you'll find that out when you do it. But I'm not gonna put up with that aggravation, I'm just not gonna open a business in Rutland. And my old lady was, uh, manager, she gets a lot of people into her company. They're here one day and they're gone the next. It's almost like they're just doing it to keep unemployment going. So that's another thing that a lot of businesses around here are dealing with. People come in, they work for a day or two and they're gone. Or they come in, they don't do the job.
I wanna talk with my father, but attitude towards work has certainly changed.
Yeah, and the government contributed to that by telling everybody that they're not essential. Stay home, you don't matter. Last I knew, everybody's job mattered, cause it kept the bills paid. It kept food on the table, it kept a roof over their head. So every job, including the one who cleans the toilets, is essential.
Okay. So you're here for funds, I presume, along with this?
So I talked with Dave and in the past, um, that has been in your regular budget. I don't know if that's where it sits right now. Um, we appreciate that again, if that is something you can do. And, uh, that would be our request. If you pay, say, spend three thousand.
That's on the budget.
It's in the budget, okay, okay.
It's like that in our, you know, regional planning and those ones.
Is the budget in Rose? I would presume that it would be coming your way, and it's not, I guess.
You know where we are.
He's, he's not bashful to call me.
Uh, no, that's one thing he's not, is bashful.
I always like her.
Joe.
We've been supportive of you folks for some time. Can you mention or come up with any benefit that the town of Pittsburgh has had since we've supported you? Have you helped us in any noticeable way?
That's a really good question. Uh, thank you for that. Um, Olivia does know, because we have statistics of some people that moved here through the program. We actually had, um, a family who came through the weekend getaway that looked at the, um, the wedding cake house. Maybe they didn't put an offer on it, um, but they didn't quite get their offer, as I recall.
Still on the market.
What we do do is we advertise things like your, your disc golf course, we advertise whatever it is that we. And Liz is gonna be great, because we need more information about what's happening here, so that we can get that word out. Over and above the regional marketing initiative, we'd like to think that we will have our hands in other activities that are going on. Like I know you're gonna be talking about what do you do with Route seven and how do you wanna redo some of the things here? Um, anytime Dave wants us to be involved in those things, if we can be helpful, we wanna do that. So outside of regional marketing, we hope that the Chamber of Economic Development, um, is recruiting, um, dollars to the county. And hopefully to, to Pittsburgh. We've been supportive of the, um, the farm, um, Pittsburgh Farm Project. Uh, we hope that that can happen and that their plans come through. Having a childcare facility within Pittsburgh would really be a good thing. I'm kinda talking around your question, because if you're asking for specific data points, sometimes that's hard to pull out.
Well, we did me, like, I called Lyle, I don't know, probably a month into being here, just to, I think we met at the bank, right? Yeah, um, you know, just to kinda throw ideas around, try to get a vision of what we'd be doing, you know, during segment two. And just other stuff to promote Pittsburgh. So, you know, we have been tossing ideas around and sometimes that's all we need. But, um, you know, it's a good resource. And I agree, I think Liz is gonna be great, you know, we, we'll have some presence on the board. And I think that's important to us too. So.
Thank you, thank you very much. And you won't be suspended if we don't stay?
No.
No, 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 that's.
Thank you very much.
Take seven going back, not arch.
Hopefully we have a police officer on Arch and fly right down through there and leave us some money.
It's like a toll road.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, budget, town clerk treasurer, assessor, zoning, animal control, health officer. So I don't know, I guessing this is, I don't see any of those people here, so.
Olivia, but, well, actually, um, I know Anna talked to Lisa today about assessor and Lisa wasn't too worried about it. But, um, if you want Ann to give a recap, she can probably do it quicker than I can, so.
Yep.
Uh, so I, I'm double checking myself at this point.
I can start or not?
No, we did legislation, which is you guys, I think, already. So if you wanna start on page five, at the bottom where elections are, you'll see an increase for the labor, for the ballot clerks. Because next year, we have a November election. That's really about the only change in ballots and supplies. I went up slightly just because of what it actually cost us to print the ballots. So, and then on page six, we have, it's just for finance corp treasurer, it's just their salaries. Uh, and insurances, not a lot we can do with that mileage, they want to keep the same. Their state dues, I went up slightly because their dues are rising. Uh, kept their training fees the same. And I think we went through administration as far as office supplies and stuff before, which is the bottom of page six.
Yeah, we did that one already.
Yep. Zoning is at the end of page seven. I decreased the zoning administrative fees or administrator, just because of the hours he's kept the last couple of years. Um, I budgeted for closer to actual than what we would assume. Clerical, he hasn't had to have a lot of clerical work the last couple of years, so I decreased that one. Clerical, he hasn't had to have a lot of clerical work the last couple of years, so I decreased that one. Zoning hearings, we kept the same. Miscellaneous, I hate miscellaneous, I got rid of all miscellaneous lines. And then, planning commission. Really, it was just, we added the planning grant expense, because we're getting a planning grant, we don't know what the expenses are gonna be towards that. And we went up on legal fees because of different things that are going on with the planning commission. BCA, I got rid of the miscellaneous line. Think we went over plant equipment already. And fire warden.
Animal control next.
Assessor's next, I think, on page 10.
Page 10?
Page 10. And there's really not any surprises there. What I have for assessor contract services is actually going to go down slightly. Lisa gave me her actual figure she's assuming for the year, and it's less than what I had budgeted, anticipated. Her being with Karen working and Karen doing everything she does, Lisa has to be in office a few less hours a year. So, it's gonna be a decrease in that dollar amount.
I still, I see you still have a miscellaneous before that, you heard that, you hear him?
That's gone.
No, I did.
This one here?
Because there's current expenses. Oh, the miscellaneous accounts? These are. These, these are, like, we don't know where to put them things. I know, but they're like for marriage licenses, emergency management. Sorry, I'm tired. And then, I think that pretty much. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that covers most of what. That takes care of the rest of the budgets, I believe. If anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Do you know where we stand now, if the bottom figures are an increase?
So. I gotta get to my page one, hold on. I think, if I run the numbers right, this one here, without special appropriations, we're down slightly, with appropriations, we're gonna be up slightly. If all of the special appropriations were to stay the same. But, we're waiting for petitions and to see where the vote lies with that.
We're down like minus 4%, right?
Between three and four, I can't remember the exact figure.
So, are we talking three or four above the appropriations?
If the appropriations go, it's about four above, I believe.
Not given what the state's talking about.
Well, I, you know, we're talking, like, you know, some of the things that we saw increases on was like first response and fire, were the big ones, you know?
And police for cops grant.
Right, the cops, the cops grant stuff. Some, mostly those, like, emergency services were where the increases were.
Okay, any more comments, questions?
So, cause I'm new to doing this with you guys, do you, like, next meeting, do you wanna go through? Or, do you guys wanna look at this between meetings? And if there's suggestions on, or questions on line items that you might think are too high, to like, should we have something? Should we discuss that at the next meeting, I guess?
Well, I don't know what everybody else thinks, I'm, if, if there was, if, can you get a printout that's got, without every line item? In other words, police budget, fire budget, so we can see totals, so we can see, and see how much they are up or down each one, so we can start. And then, if we see one that we think's out of whack, then we can go back and look at the specifics in it. That, I think, would be the easiest way for me.
You do have the totals for departments and it does have the budgets and actuals for the last two years on it, and then it has the percentage increases, so.
We're looking for one sheet. That way, we don't have to fight through the.
Fight through all the stuff. That way, we can, we can look at those, and then if we see one that, you know, this one's up quite a bit, we need to go back and look at that, we can pull it out, but.
I can do, I can tell you the three major ones that you're gonna see major percentages, is first response, fire, and police.
Right, but it's, it's nice to see all of them. Cause maybe one is way down and we need to see what magical thing they did that we could use somewhere else.
We can have a two-page doc that just compares.
So, can we do both? Can we do the summary and then have, cause you know, we're gonna be tweaking this thing again this week. Like Ann said, the assessor's number's gonna change and, you know, we've been trying to get together a couple times a week, just to go through and make sure.
If we have the summary for the next meeting.
We'll put it right on top of the budget for next meeting, does that sound, so you have it?
Yeah, it's fine, so we can just look at one page, that'd be good, or two pages, whatever.
Whatever.
It would give us a comparison of like, what my up here was. Coming here, it was up 2% wouldn't. Oh, you know, and then special appropriations.
And we don't know until those budgets, those are all.
One of those due January 12th?
But I think we should have.
I think they usually vote on them the first meeting of January.
This is what it goes up if you vote for these.
Appropriations should be voted on at a town meeting.
No, but the budget itself.
We'll have to get it in time to put in town report and everything.
But usually, you do that the first meeting in January.
So, that's why we should be looking at the totals. I think that's the way to do it right now, we're right about on.
Yeah, there's no, there's no urgency right now.
Okay.
And if you guys do have questions, don't hesitate to call Ann or I, you know, if there's something that comes up, I mean.
Dave, this has been so much easier than what we dealt with last year.
You know, it's, it's been a joint effort, I mean, it's great, you know, that everyone's really been a part of it and.
Okay, uh, moving on, speed limit ordinance discussion.
So, in front of you, you have the speed limit ordinance that I believe the board approved last year, or maybe earlier this year. We had been discussing since we expanded the 25 mile an hour zone on Route 7 to look at changing everything within the village to 25. So, Chad and I actually took this and drove around and to see, cause some of these actually were in the wrong things and we just, so. The ones in red are ones that have been either, have been taken out of one section and put in another. So, like, the 25 mile an hour zone added Arch Street and Elm Street to the, to Cooley Bridge, Shaw Road, Randall Park Extension, I think I said Beach, River Street, Camp Sangamon Lane, which is odd we even own, and Hudson Terrace. The 30 mile an hour one, the only one we really looked at with that was right out here at Furnish Road, which is 35 now. We have had some complaints with cars driving really fast on this road, and we have had the speed card out here.
This is.
Plains Road.
I'm sorry, Plains Road, what did I call it?
Furnace.
Yeah, Plains Road. So, you know, that was one that we looked at to go from 35 to 30. And then, then, I think Creed Hill was in the wrong spot, so that went back to 35. And then, just, you know, some of the things in the back here with, with the, or the second page with the US Route 7 one, we wanted to, Chad went and re, you know, measured where we expanded the 25 mile an hour zone, so that's in there in red too.
Hey, Camp Sagamon Lane, isn't that a private road?
It's not, it's a town road.
I used to go all the way through.
Yeah.
I don't think you walk through.
It's not up to standards, that's for sure, it's a little.
You have our kind of walk the last half of it.
I mean, they kinda control their own speed, I think they have a sign like, like 12 miles an hour or something on the other way.
Seemed like that's kinda ridiculous for our police department to waste your time.
You guys could discontinue it, if you didn't want it, you know, there's always that.
Well, they, they would have, yeah, they would have, Camp would have to be agreeable to.
Which they may not be.
I don't think we do much to it, I think we bring some gravel down once a year and that's about it, so. I didn't seem too concerned about it.
All right, so, does anybody have any comments on these?
I do, Pine Woods Road is listed in the 35 zone. Had a lot of complaints lately on Pine Woods Road, the speed there. And if you're gonna drop this one, that should be 30 also. With no question, it all intersects. And I, I follow them, when they come out from Sugar Hollow Road and this way, they hit Pine Woods Road, they are singing. So, we've had a lot of complaints.
You guys wanna go to 30?
I would say that one should go to 30, if you wanna change the others.
Okay. Uh, where the heck is it?
That should go up here.
So, with this one, you know, like, with our ordinance, we do have to, you know, post it and everything, we can't just change it like the state. Go through the motions with everything too.
As it is right now, is it, there's no speed limits at all?
No, there are, there are, but like, we noticed like, like Pleasant and Mechanic, I think, are still at 30, or 35. So, some of the signs needed to be updated and, on some of them, and some of them just were in the wrong category, so, we, you know, with, I mean, Chad, Chad and I spent some time on this, trying to get them, you know, driving around and like, with, with the village and with the amount of folks complaining about speeding, I think 25 was where we all wanted to be with everything within the village, so.
So, do we need a motion on this, or, okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the new speed limit regulations.
With Pine Woods changed?
With the Pine Woods changed on there, going to the 30 mile an hour zone.
Can I get a second? Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're good. RV and homeless discussion.
So, Mark had asked me to put this on the agenda, because we had an issue, I guess, a couple weeks ago now with, there was an RV parked for quite some time overnight with a generator running down on the pull-off, right, basically at the town line on 7. So, Mark had called me, we did end up having chief go down and talk to the guy, and I'd talked to some folks at the state, because it's technically their jurisdiction, so, the folks did move. I, I don't think they've been back since they left.
They did come back one time and then I haven't seen them since, right?
They came back three or four times.
Was it three, four?
They are gone at the moment.
They're gone. So, I know that we had a discussion a few, maybe months ago, when, you know, the funding was leaving for, like, Rutland County with the hotel, or Rutland with the hotels and stuff, so. I, I don't know what the, what, what the proposal is here, what we try to do, I mean, it's, it's happened and, you know, we did reach out to everyone we needed to, and I know that RPD had talked to Rutland about it. You know, it finally resolved itself, but it did take a little, a little while to do, so.
So, this was someone living in a camper there?
Yep.
So, here, here's the situation, and I don't think we have to act on anything now, because the issue is not occurring now. But if somebody does this on that pull-off, or another pull-off within Route 7, AOT's in charge right now. The police departments can't do anything, AOT's in charge, because that's who I called to start this. But, in order for the AOT to do it, they have to have a unanimous recommendation from the town select board, that that needs to happen. And it has to be in a meeting and it has to be noted. So, in this case, because that really does touch our border and Rutland town, both select boards would have to vote unanimously, that person has to go.
Has to be unanimous?
Yeah, has to be everybody. The state, he told me, this is an inside person, that the state said, the state legislature really doesn't care if people live on the side of the road, because they don't have to pay for them that way, and that's what the comment was. So, there's a whole method, if this does happen again, it'll have to come to us, we'll have to, and then, no, no, or another place, we're gonna have to vote on it, then it has to go to the AOT here. The police just jump on it, and, you know, our, our chief went down today, you need to get going before this gets. But, that is the sequence you have to use now, that is what our state set us up with. So, I think we should be on alert that this could happen again and then we will have to act. The problem is, you're gonna be two to three weeks, which is about how long they stayed, it was almost four weeks, before we can even get away home, four weeks. It's no big deal on my end, this border's one of my fields, but the people across the road, just in Rutland, can't sleep, you have a generator running next to your house. That isn't really fair to them, and so, Rutland would have to act too. But, just be aware, and we brought this up before, this could be a problem.
Now, so, when I was on the planning commission, the last time we redid zoning, we had that discussion. I don't remember if you were still on it or not.
I was.
And, and certain members of the board assured us that that was never gonna happen and blah, blah, blah.
I think, let me interrupt for a second, I think you're incorrect where you're going, it's cause we talked about people living on their property in a camper. That's what we discussed there that I remember.
I think that was omitted from the building regs too.
No, it wasn't, no, because I've had this same thing happen on my property, so it wasn't, it was people living in campers, period, in the town. Well, no, it wasn't, because the reason I thought we should have it was because I've had the same thing. Somebody snuck in by a bunch of neighbors out onto my property and was living there unbeknownst to anybody. That was, you know, 20, wow, 30 years ago, I mean, it was a long time ago, so it happens, so.
I had one of mine, my first.
But anyway, and so, if, so let me ask you this, if it had been put in our zoning, would that have changed things?
No, no, cause it's a state poll. That's why I'm saying, this doesn't, I know where you're going with it and, yeah, that is a discussion, this is any pull-off. A state pull-off or anything on 7. Just be aware that we may have to go down this road again.
Okay, Joe?
Oh, I had a question. The pull-off, I believe if I remember correctly, it has a no dumping sign, does it have a no overnight parking sign? Would that make any difference? Because I know down 7, a lot of the pull-offs, in fact, one of the surprising things to me, when we first started coming up here, is how many pull-offs and different like rest stops, it says no overnight parking. And I was like, well, where are truck drivers supposed to park when they're out of hours, in the middle of 7?
So, Joe, that's a state, that's a state act.
They would have, they would have to post that there.
And AOT actually said that if we can't get people to move out of this, we'll just close the pull-off.
Which they've done in a lot of places.
You're probably talking on for leaving Rutland?
No, 7. Between, between here and Bennington, almost every pull-off that you come to, it says no overnight parking.
So, that's how long, maybe a half hour or something.
I think the situation's ready itself, I just thought we should be aware that we may have to move out of this road.
But if you have it documented too, that mean, that shows a state that has been discussed.
Yeah, well, that's cause not the state wants to handle the situation. They don't, they don't care, they just passed it by. Anyway.
Okay, yep, act on orders.
Regional Planning Commission representative.
Oh, that's right, yep, I missed that, yep, okay, uh, thank you. Uh, Regional Planning Commission, so, when I got done, Donna was the alternate. We need to officially appoint her as our delegate to Rutland Regional. So, if someone could give me that motion. Anybody second it? Okay, any discussion? Making Donna Wilson our primary contact at Rutland Regional meetings? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
We'll get the form and I'll have Alicia sign it, I, we're looking for one tonight, we couldn't find one anywhere, I know we have one, so.
Okay, orders, uh, $246,707.20. Anybody have anything, questions?
I noticed there was a lot of, what were they, over tax payments, there was refunds. There always had some, but it seemed like it was an extremely large amount of them, is that what happened? Or maybe there's no.
They could've been late homesteads, who knows, you know, the way they were escrowed or whatever, they were, they were quite a field.
More than usual, it seems like, but you know, it's the way it works.
I have no questions.
No, I was gonna look.
What it was, I. There was something I had, but I don't remember what it was, it was a mental pressing. Okay, so, we can start passing those around.
Okay, so we can start passing those around.
There's like three weeks of payroll here, too, so. Just while we're doing that, I did include the guide to open meeting law in your guys' packets, and you see, like, we're starting to put like the wording for the executive sessions on there, because we really should be using those in the public meeting before we go on. So just so you guys have it, you know, some things have changed since this first came out, and I know this is 2019, but, you know, it'd be worth reviewing and seeing what, you know, what is allowable for executive and what isn't, and just a bunch of other things, so just for your information.
Is this minutes? So I wasn't there.
And we also have current financials in there for you to review. Oh, I have something for you. I'll give it to you after we. Don't say that.
Yeah, they'll be putting in, you'll, you'll have, you'll have three, you'll have three hots in a cot if you do that.
That's on the auditor's report or something, isn't it? Use rubber stamps?
Yeah. No. Yeah, not allowed.
That mosquito.
Okay, so I need, we have a number of items for executive session, so I will need a motion in pursuit, or in accordance with 1 VSA 313A for premature general public knowledge would clearly place a municipality or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body is or may be party, 1 VSA SA1A. The appointment, employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, 1 VSA S313A3. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's the end of the public.